Good evening and welcome to our regular monthly city council meeting. We're glad to see everyone here. I have a lot going on tonight and so we see. First item on the agenda is we have Pastor Eddie McLean of Kingsgate Church in Hamlet with us tonight to give our invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you that in the name of Jesus you blessed us all together as a community and the city of Hamlet. We thank you for all of our officials, our city council members, our mayors, and all those that represent our leadership. We pray blessings on our leadership that you'll continue to bless them and give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to God, our city, and our people. Father, thank you for the newly elected officials tonight, that you'll continue to bless them as they begin to serve their beginning. We do love you and we do appreciate everything these city councilmen and mayor are doing and everybody in our city to make it grow and prosper and be successful. Father, we thank you that your presence will continually be in this place and guide and lead us to your coming. Lord, we love you and we thank you. So, Father, tonight bless each and every one that's here. God bless everyone now, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming tonight. At this time, council, we have before us the agenda for tonight. Are there any changes or deletions, additions that need to be made? If not, I'd ask for a motion.
Motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Also, you have before you the members of the minutes of the November 10th, 2015, regular meeting and the close session minutes have been going around. What are your wishes on that at this time?
So moved to adopt.
Got a second? Are there any changes, deletions, additions that need to be made to it? Okay, if not. All right, at this time, we'll move along to comments from the attendees. This is the time when we allow anyone in the audience that would like to or would like to come up and say something before the council or as long as it's not something that's on the agenda for tonight. So, at this time, we would ask anyone that would like to come up, please do so. Bernice, I believe you had some comments for us?
Good evening, Mayor Bayless and council. My name is Bernie Soins and I'm here tonight to tell you all about Old Fashioned Christmas. It's going to take place Friday on Hamlet Avenue from 5:30 to 8:30. Santa rides in on a 1953 Farmall tractor with two seats and the children can climb up and talk to him and Santa gives them a little treat and then they run away to get on the wagon and we'll have a couple of horses here and there from out of Fairmont and it's a long wagon. I think it holds about 12 to 15, but it's a good ride for the adults and the children. Fairview Heights, Ms. Melanie Cole, she's the music teacher there and she'll have her students on the street. They play little instruments and she's going to be performing at 6:30. And then Bow Moos, Ms. Holly Littlefield, she and her dancers will be on the street at 7 o'clock and both of these are real good. We have a DJ Jimmy Reese and then we have Beth McDonald vocalist and Tanya Ditsen vocalist and we're going to have a balloon clown on the street and she blows the balloons and makes animals and passes them out to all the children or anyone that wants them. We'll have hot chocolate and we'll have cookies. And then Saturday night on Main Street from 5:30 to 8:30, Santa again rides in on his tractor and of course we'll have the horse and wagon there. We're going to have Dark Horse Van from Carthage. They will be on the visitor's center's porch. That's where they'll be playing from. The senior citizens will be here doing their line dance and of course anybody else can do their line dance or shag or whatever kind of dance they want to do. And I hope everybody comes and it'll be nice for all of us. A little balloon lady will be here. And in the waiting room, Vicky Daniels and her group will be performing and they have Christmas and gospel music in there. And then, of course, Jimmy Reese will be up at the end of Raleigh and Main. Seems that everyone goes to the depot and nobody's at the other end of the street but the merchants' fair. So, this year, we decided to have some entertainment so get the people up at that end. And he'll be there with Christmas music. There'll be face painting and the merchants will be open. Also, John's Restaurant will be open and the streets will be blocked off and the kids love to play in the streets so that everybody come play in the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernice. Does anyone else have anything for us tonight that they'd like to talk about? If you do, you're certainly welcome to come up. If not, we'll close the comments section. At this time, we were scheduled to have Chief Waters to recognize personnel, however Chief Waters is unable to be with us tonight, but I believe that our city manager has a new employee he would like to introduce.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I just wanted to take this time to recognize Gary Green, who is about to start as our new museum manager and downtown coordinator. I think that someone with Gary's business and marketing as well as civic club background will be great for the position. I'm really excited to have someone like Gary working with us here in Hamlet and just wanted to give him this opportunity to introduce himself and give him his new name tag and his pen.
All right, come on up, Gary.
I've been reintroducing myself to some of these people back here and a couple of them told me to behave when I came up here, so that's really hard for me to do, but I want everybody to know how delighted I am to be here. And we've got a really strong team here in Hamlet. A lot of these people I've known for years and years and years, knew Eddie probably longer than he realizes and went to Leadership Richmond with Calvin 15 years ago. So, there's a lot of good people in Hamlet and we're going to do a lot of good work and I'm looking forward to hitting the ground running. So, thank y'all for having me.
Gary, again, for serving with us and I also wanted to thank Zach Garner for serving in the interim for such a long time and doing such a good job doing a two-person job.
We've had a lot of great comments on the job that Zach's been doing down there and that's definitely appreciated. Thank you. Before we go further, I would just like to recognize that we have Twyla Allen from Lumber River Council Government with us tonight. She doesn't have anything to say, but she's here and so we're glad to have you, Twyla. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move along to item seven and we've got one of those, we've got sad times and good times and I guess the sad times is we have two of our members who are going off of the board tonight. And before I go further, I'd like to ask Councilman Pressler if he has some comments for us.
I don't have anything really scripted. Long, long day, a long day today in this week, but it's a good day. It's a good day for Hamlet. We've got new vision coming. We've got new leaders. We've got new ideas. As you know, I've been here 16 years and that's some 288 meetings, give or take, counting six meetings in addition every year in addition to planning sessions, things like that. I'm probably lowballing, it's probably been more like 320 meetings, but I won't say 288 meetings at least that I've been up here over those 16 years. A lot has gone on personally and with the town. You know, we've made a lot of progress in some areas. We've learned some things in some other areas. We've made a few mistakes along the way, but that's how we build character. That's how we learn. That's how we make ourselves better. We make ourselves a better town with better leadership on down the road and in the future. I'd be, I need to thank my mom, who supported me from day one, and my dad, which is no longer with me. I lost him in 2007, but they were strong. My mom still is a strong supporter as much as she can, but Dad asked me, "Why? Why'd you do this? Why'd you run?" And, you know, but anyway, we can get into that, you know, some other point. During that time, I started wearing these. I've lost a little hair. It's turned a little gray and some spots. My daughter is now, she was, wow, she was three years old when I started. She's at ECU now, sophomore year. I didn't have a son and I've got a 14-year-old son also. And I've always had their support and they've been there with me. And times when I'll go home and just want to scream in a pillow or holler or whatever, you know, they were there for me. They tolerated me and I want to apologize for them for maybe missing out on some things here and there. I think we all probably have, especially those of us that's been involved in law enforcement. It's been a lot of times you miss things at home and when we're council members, we've missed things that we probably could have been with our families. And, you know, of course, we're here by choice, but I want to apologize to them, but also thank them for their patience and being there for me and being there steady with me over the years. Some mentors that I want to address, I think I've got every council member I've served with, I think. I might have left one or two out. I don't, I don't think so, though. When I first came on, it was Bert Unger, it was David Knight, it was Derek Crawford and it was Bill Williams and I learned so much from those guys. And the mayor, the mayor then was Kerry Garner. And I'm sure that the chief's been in the business a while, but Tony and Jesse could tell you, it takes you a good couple of years to get your feet on the ground in this position and learning so much that we can do, but so much that we can't do. I came in here, you know, at 33-years-old, ready to rip the cover off and make changes and polish it up and shine it and we're going to make Hamlet the, you know, my ideal town, but wills of government won't allow that. It takes a while. It takes time. It takes cooperation. It takes all of us agreeing on my vision and their vision and coming together and coming up with plans on how we're going to make Hamlet better. But people like Bert Unger, all those years that he served, and I see him here tonight and I'm so tickled that he's here tonight. Bert's one of the first ones I've served with. He's been on this board on two different occasions for a total of, I think, 24 or 26 years, something like that. I can't remember, but Bert, I appreciate your guidance and your wisdom and Marcus, there's you a good resource. Bill, any of you, there's a good resource on town and things that go on in the town. Bert is still a wealth of knowledge. Again, some of them that I've served with over the years are Bert Unger, Bill Williams. I learned a lot from Bill over the years. I mean, a college dean, I mean, you know, on our board, how lucky were we there to have somebody with that experience and that wisdom. Bill Bayless, I've served with eight years as a council member and the last four years, I think, or two years, two years as our mayor. Bill's nothing but Hamlet. His heart's Hamlet and he's here to represent you all. Jesse, Jesse served with me four years and then was off for a little while and now he's halfway through his second term and Jesse's got a lot of good ideas and I know he's got a lot of love for Hamlet. Jonathan Bowie, who's not here, that's one. That's a young man that really cares about Hamlet and I look for good things and I tell him to his face, I expect good things from him and for Hamlet because he's got a drive that some of us don't quite have like we used to. We got it, but we don't quite have that young vigor like I had when I was 33. I'm not saying I'm that much older than Jonathan, I'm just saying. Eddie Martin, there's another one, even though he's only been here with us two years, but you talk about a wealth of knowledge sitting on the other end of the counter here. A police chief for 30 years, magistrate for over five years and now he graciously comes up here and works with us and serves with us and, you know, people like that. We're lucky to have them volunteering and being involved in our community. Tony, Tony, a local businessman for all these years, been here with me for eight years, half the time I've been here. Tony's got a lot of love for Hamlet also. Tony's got a lot of compassion, especially a lot of compassion for the employees. He believes in you guys. He believes in the employees and whenever I need a word of comfort or something like that or any of us do, Tony's the man. He's rock solid. He's rock solid in his faith and he's always there for me and he's always there for all of us. Tony's a good man. David Knight, had a fire chief up here with me for, I want to, excuse me, David Fuller, I'm sorry. Fire chiefs getting run together. David Fuller, David was up here with me, I think, for eight years. Was it eight years, I think? And might have been here before, yeah, I think he might have been here, yeah, that's right. He was here a term before me. We ran together. David Knight, retired fire chief from Hamlet. I mean, David Fuller, I'm sorry. They're both fire chiefs. Okay, they're both fire chiefs. I apologize. But David has been a wealth of knowledge and he still is and he's been a mentor and he's one that we can count on, especially when it comes to policy and procedures and things with the fire department. Derek Crawford, wasn't here but one term with Derek, local attorney. Derek did us a good job, but conflicts of interest and all cut his time up here, I think, to only one term. So, we only got to work with Derek one time, one term. And then I think the last one, unless I've missed one, oh, well, I got one after that. Brent Barbie, Brent Barbie, who's now a vice president out of the college, was here with us for a term. And Brent was another one of those that was, that had a wealth of ideas and things that are, and of course, the conflicts and all and him trying to start a new career out at the college and all, cut his time short, but I sure do, I sure do miss having him and enjoyed serving with him because he was, he was very wise beyond his years. Brent's a good guy. I'll mention a little bit more about the mayors. Bill, been here with us for two years. Prior to that, it was Jeff Smart and prior to Jeff, it was Kerry Garner that I served with and all three of them, all three of them have done us a good job. Very wise, very involved in town, either through businesses or working here over the years. So, we've had good, solid leadership there in the mayor position and steering us right and guiding us right. And Bill, that's a thankless job sometimes and you take the brunt of a lot of our complaints and concerns and we appreciate what you and Jeff and Kerry have done over the years. The last one I'll mention was, it will be Abby Covington. She's right there with Bert, who has, she's served 28 or 30 years here on this board and I can't say, I can't describe what she means to this town. She brought us through the Imperial Fire, through a very dark time in our town, a very, very rough time. I'm sure some of you remembered, Jesse, I know you were working here, yeah, you were working here and Chief, I'm sure, we're all aware of it up here and it was a tough time for the city of Hamlet. We had everybody from Washington down here marching and upset with what had happened and it was an experience that I wish on nobody and again, she was rock solid, led us through that. We also got an all-American city under her, under her leadership and then while she was up here on the board, we, you know, we really, really leaned on her in far as getting our budgets and things together and what would you do and what did you do in the past? So, that leadership there was invaluable. So, I say that, all of that to say this, I've been blessed in working with some good, solid, knowledgeable, wise people. I'm just a cop. I've been a cop all my life. Public service has been my life, okay? I know police work. I know it pretty good. Think I know a little bit about city work, but this wide array of wisdom that I just described, we have been blessed and I thank God that I had an opportunity to be with these people and learn so much from them. Employees, the best, the best. You know, I'll start with, I'll start with the girls that I primarily work with and deal with and get emails from and get phone calls from, sometimes when I don't want to hear the phone calls, but they're the first line of who we talk to here at town. And Tammy, you've been our clerk pretty much since I've been here. How many years now, 14? 15 years. 15 years as our town clerk. I hope, I hope y'all are going to appoint her again tonight. I'd like to think that you will. We'll have a full slate once y'all come up here, so that, yeah, I hope y'all, it don't mean anything, but I hope Tammy's our clerk at the end of the night. Tammy and then our finance over the years, Mike Dees, who kept us, wouldn't let us, I mean, he'd slice a penny 15 ways. I mean, he knew how to save money. He was tight with the money. He would call us out on our budget meetings and he kept us in good fiscal shape and we're still in good fiscal shape. Jill, Jill replaced him when he retired. Jill has done us an outstanding job and she's pretty tight with the money, too. She is, and she'll let us know when we're pushing the limits when it comes to budgets and things like that. And we, that wisdom we need and I'm sure the council will agree with me and new council will, too. Y'all see the checkbook every day. You see the bills every day. Y'all are familiar with what we're doing. Town managers, I couldn't ask for two of the, well, I've worked with three, I forgot. Started with Lee Matthews, who was here a couple of years. Lee was here through, I think, maybe early 90 or 91. Was he here through 90?
He was here after 2000.
Okay. 2003, excuse me.
Yeah, that's right.
2003. Lee was here then and Lee loved the town and enjoyed working with him, but then Michelle replaced him and Michelle has moved on to another, another position somewhere else, but I can't say enough about her and what she meant to this town, at least to me, in getting things done. She was a taskmaster, a very determined and very driven lady. Hard, very hard to replace, but you know what? I think we replaced her with a good fellow. Marcus, Marcus, I apologize for you coming into a cat fight or a bar fight or whatever you want to call it up here because there was chairs flying and bar stools going over top of heads and it reminded me of working one night in a bar in Rayford. One night I went in, but anyway, when I was working, I wasn't a patron, but anyway, you just looked and I'm sure you walked in the door and said, "What have I gotten myself into?" But you have stood and you've learned, you've taken it in and you've done us a good job and I think you've learned this, you've learned this position the hard way and I think you're about ready for New York City manager. With what you've been through here, you've, really, you have done us a good job in a little over a year and I appreciate the vision you have. Keep that up. Keep these guys in line as much as you can, although I know you work for them, but sometimes we might not think about things and you might need to throw that out there for the board to think about before they make an action. So, that's what they hire you for, whether or not they want to hear it. You're the help guide also. But again, and then the rest of the employees, I'm not going to name them all. I'm going to wrap up here shortly. There's so many, I mean, I could name so many that it's been, that we've lost, that we've shared some really hard times with, some that made decisions that they shouldn't have made and broke our hearts, you know, to be, you know, having to go through us and us be involved. Babies born, I mean, but let's go beyond that and those are good times and happy times, but I'm more appreciative of what they bring to work every day. Our employees, I've seen them on Thanksgiving at night breaking, working water lines that are broken and ditches up to their neck and while we're all at home and maybe 10 cars on the road. No questions asked, never hear them complain. Anything we've ever asked them to address, they get it done. Employees, y'all have made us look good and we appreciate it. Please pass it on. Department has passed it on to your employees, how much it's meant to me over the years, what y'all have brought to the table in making this town a better place. I could talk about employees all night, but I'm not. We have got some of the best in the world that go above and beyond, that do more than they're asked to, that go beyond their job description and we appreciate that. Citizens, I want to thank the citizens for entrusting me on four different times, although it got, yeah, near the end there, I barely got in. About one of them hanging Chad things with me and Tony because I barely got in, but still, I had an opportunity to serve this town for, on four different, four different terms for a total of 16 years. Thank you. I'm humbled. I'm humbled for the opportunity. It's time for me to go. It's time for new ideas. Some of you I know will shake your heads, yes, Pat, it's been time for you to go, but I'm leaving. I'm getting out of here. I've got a new chapter in my life with retirement and other opportunities that are out there and it's time to go. I think 16 years is enough and I'm going to get on out of here and I appreciate the opportunity to serve you and I'll be there if anybody needs me for anything. I want to encourage volunteerism. It's a dying thing. The downtown committee, all the work they've done over the years and we appreciate that. Any other project that we've had going on, it's dwindled. I mean, this is just my observation over the years from 16 years ago into recent years when we've asked for help, when we've asked for citizens to come out, it's not there. It's a different society now. We're all busy. We've got things going on. We've got places to be and things to do, but if you can make any time to give back to your town, please do. We could use your help. The 88 employees and us up here can't do it all as far as making this a better place. We need everybody's help. They're going to need everybody's help and we encourage you to participate in organizing 4th of July, organizing the parade, cleanup days downtown, painting days where you paint buildings, meet me at the lake, helping with our city lake, things like that. I encourage volunteers and I pledge to do that as much as I can because I'm not, I don't think I'm leaving Hamlet. I don't see that coming. So, I wanted to say that for our citizens. New council, I want to welcome David and Wendy. Congratulations on being elected and I look forward to seeing the direction with some new ideas, some new vision and some new leadership. I think the sky will be the limit. It's going to be tough times. I promise you that. There'll be some tough times. It's going to be tough, you know, and I can cite back to where the state took our tax money one year and employees had to go on short time. That hurt, putting employees on short time. That was tough and it was no choice of ours. That was back in 2001 or two, I think. And then we had that issue with the water shortage one year. So, there's going to be tough times. I think, I think we're going to be good financially, last I heard and I know that last year that I was a little bit very conservative when it came to our budget and wanting to make sure of that and I told you if I was wrong on that, I'd admit that I was wrong and right now it looks like money's coming in pretty good, so maybe I was wrong, okay? I think I made that.
That's a good thing.
It's a good thing. It was a good thing. I was trying to be conservative with our funds. With that, I wish everybody, I wish everybody luck, town employees, citizens, and the new board especially. I wish y'all luck and I look forward to seeing where you take us and it's a very rewarding feeling. It's going to be a very empty feeling when I leave here in just a few minutes because this has been my life on Tuesday nights and about eight or 10 other meetings a year for 16 years. It's going to be an empty spot there, but thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis, your turn.
I think Pat pretty well said everything. He thanked everybody. He said he'd done, I think, 280 meetings altogether. Look at all the money you made. I mean, we get paid by the meetings, so what are you complaining about? Not really.
Not really.
No, it's definitely not for the money, but I appreciate all the employees. You do a great job. I appreciate Tammy, Gail. There's been times I had to call on them for things and they really, they really stepped up and helped me out in different areas and I thank them for that. I've been here eight years. It was a hard decision not to run because I'm like Pat, when I leave here tonight, it's going to be tough. I remember eight years ago Kerry sitting up here and reading his speech to Lee and he started tearing up and later after the meeting, somebody made the point, said, "Did you see Kerry almost cry?" Folks, when you put your heart and soul into this, it does hurt. It really hurts and so I'm going to miss it. I'm like Pat, I'm not leaving, though. I'm going to be right here in Hamlet. I'm going to be over there on Freeman Mill Road. Hopefully, I can help out some. Hopefully I can help out some also in some volunteer areas and different things. Uh, but I thank the citizens of Hamlet for putting your trust and your faith in me for eight years. Um, I've tried to do my best. Uh, I would like to say to those Dave and Wendy's coming on, uh, it's a little bit cold outside tonight. These chairs get hot sometimes. They get a little warm. And so that's some things that you will have to look for. Hard decisions have to be made. People's lives are affected, uh, whether they're employees, whether they're citizens, whoever it is, lives are affected by decisions that's made right up here. And so it takes a lot of thought, a lot of forethought, but thank the citizens. I really appreciate your confidence in me. Employees, keep doing the great job you're doing. Uh, like Pat said, you make us look good. You make the city of Hamlet look great. And I'm, I remember when the water line broke out at Hardee's and it took a long time to fix that. And I've seen those guys where you couldn't see their heads down in holes and they're working on a water line and it'd be cold like this. I think when Christmas Eve or Thanksgiving or something, they were working on the line while we were at home. So thank you. I do appreciate it. And I'm not going to do like Pat and go on and on, but I, I just, I don't hold that against Pat.
I've sixteen years worth.
He's sixteen years.
I had to get.
And he done it in about fifteen, twenty minutes. That's pretty good.
[laughing]
That's pretty good. I only had eight years, so I only get five minutes.
[laughing]
But, uh, the time I spent down at Lumber River Council of Government, I enjoyed every minute of it. Uh, that was hard to give up. I was the chairman on the board down there and I really enjoyed that, uh, and I hope that this council will appoint somebody else. We need a representative on that board. Uh, that is a good board to be on, a lot of information we receive. Bill's taken over the Transportation Advisory Committee. Uh, he told me a while back, he said, I really appreciate you giving me that job. He said, I had to fill out fifty pages of paperwork. You really do. There's all kind of ethics and all sorts of stuff. They want to know your life history. So, but appreciate Bill doing that, uh, because of being on the T A C board. We got a turning light at Hardee's and Burger King. And so it's benefits of being on these boards. So I encourage our new members to, uh, get involved on some of these other things. But citizens, employees, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. [applause] Councilman Pressler. Please come down, please. I have a resolution of appreciation here for Councilman Pressler. Whereas Pat Pressler has served the community as a member of the Hamlet City Council from December nineteen ninety-nine through December of twenty fifteen, and whereas during Pat's sixteen-year council tenure, he served as a mayor pro temp from two thousand and nine to two thousand and eleven and was an instrumental member of the Seaboard Festival Committee for many years, which he served as president. And whereas he has devoted his time, energy and talents to this community and provided experience, expertise, passion and sound judgment on its behalf with integrity, dignity and thoughtful reflection, and whereas Pat has worked to promote the best interest for the city of Hamlet, betterment for its economic, social, cultural and aesthetic development, and whereas the city has benefited because of his vocal, articulate and passionate commitment to efficient operations, and whereas through the performance of his duties and responsibilities as a member of the city council, Pat has made excellent and constructive contributions to the municipal government of our city. And whereas Pat Pressler has earned the admiration of those with whom he has come into contact and the care of his fellow public servants, now therefore be it resolved that the city council for the city of Hamlet does hereby express our appreciation and thanks as well as that of our citizens. To Pat Pressler for his dedicated service to the community, this the eighth day of December twenty fifteen, signed Bill Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet, on behalf of the city. We'll give that to you. We also have for him a plaque and it says, "The City of Hamlet, North Carolina gratefully acknowledges Pat Pressler for your outstanding service to the citizens of Hamlet as council member from December nineteen ninety-nine through December twenty fifteen and as mayor pro temp from December two thousand and nine through December two thousand and eleven. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to public service in this community twenty fifteen." Resolution of appreciation. Whereas Tony Lewis has served the community as a member of the Hamlet City Council from December two thousand and seven through December two thousand and fifteen, and whereas during Tony Lewis's eight-year council tenure, he served as a mayor pro temp from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen, and he represented the community on numerous boards, including serving as the Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee at Lumber River Council of Governments. And whereas Tony has devoted his time, energy and talents to this community and provided experience, expertise, passion and sound judgment on its behalf with integrity, dignity and thoughtful reflection, and whereas Tony Lewis has worked to promote the best interest of the city for the betterment of its economic, social and aesthetic development, and whereas the city has benefited because of Tony Lewis's articulate and passionate commitment to efficient operations, and whereas through the performance of his duties and responsibilities as a member of the city council, Tony Lewis has made excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our city. And whereas Tony has earned the admiration of those with whom he has come into contact and the care of his fellow public servants, now therefore be it resolved that the city council for the city of Hamlet does hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks as well as that of our citizens. To Tony Lewis for his dedicated service to the community, this the eighth day of December twenty fifteen, signed Mayor Bill Bayless on behalf of the City Council of Hamlet." Tony? Yeah. We also have a plaque from Tony. Says, "The City of Hamlet, North Carolina gratefully acknowledges Tony Lewis for your outstanding service to the citizens of Hamlet as a council member from December two thousand and seven through two, December two thousand and fifteen, as mayor pro temp from December twenty eleven through December twenty thirteen. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to public service in this community twenty fifteen." [applause] We will be calling on you. [laughing] Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Very good. Thank you. We graciously appreciate their service and they will truly be missed, but like I told Tony, we'll be calling on you occasionally for various things, so we know that you have taken another stressful job. [laughing] Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to move along to item number eight and we will turn the program over to, uh, our city clerk.
Um, if I may call Mayor Bay, Bayless.
Okay.
Yeah. Just a second. Linda will.
Yeah. Thank you.
If you'll stand right here where they can see you.
I've got to raise my right hand. Come on.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to raise your right hand.
[laughing]
If you would just repeat after me.
Right.
I, William Bayless, do solemnly swear.
I, William Bayless, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of North Carolina.
And the state of North Carolina.
To the best of my ability as mayor.
To the best of my ability as mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. I'll get your signature afterwards.
Pardon?
I'll get your signature afterwards. Thanks, Linda.
Sir? That's fine. Good. That's good.
David Lindsay, do solemnly swear.
I do, sir. David Lindsay, solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the state of North Carolina.
And the state of North Carolina.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As council member.
As council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Wendy Masagie?
Come on up and take your pick.
Sorry. I should be used to this. Okay, raise your right hand, place your left hand on the bowl and just repeat. You want to, you want to God. Yeah. I know they want to see you. Okay, just repeat after me. I, Wendy Masagie.
I, Wendy Masagie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of North Carolina.
And the state of North Carolina.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
As council member.
As council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I present to you the news as Hamlet City Council.
Item number nine. Council, at this time, uh, we, at the position where we need to appoint city clerk. Do I have a motion to appoint someone?
Tammy Kirkley is our city clerk.
Have a motion? I need a second.
Second.
Have a second? Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All in favor. Item number ten, appointment of city attorney. At current time, we're using the Bro Law Firm. Uh, do I have a motion on an attorney?
Make a motion that we would appoint the Bro Law Firm, uh, and hopefully specifically, Mr. Morpheus to serve as our attorney.
Well, I second that.
Have a motion and a second? I have any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Very good. Now, at this time, we'll move into new business. Item number twelve. We, uh, spoke with Mr. Earl Bradshaw today. He came in and he said he had a very important meeting out of town that he had to go to tonight and asked if we could postpone this until January. So, uh, we did. We will be, uh, if that's all right, I'd ask for a motion to table it till January. Yeah, I'll give you a second. I'll give. Okay. Uh, also, at this time, we need to make a nomination and appointment for a mayor pro temp. Just about overlooked that.
Yeah. Letting nominate Jonathan Bowie to continue to serve in that role.
Got a motion?
No, second.
Okay. Any further, any other nominations? If not, any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. We tabled a motion on Mr. Bradshaw till January. Um, item number thirteen, uh, did you want to table that? He is not, Mr. Anderson is not going to be able to be here tonight.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If we could table that.
Item until the next meeting. Um, Mr. Anderson is unable to attend tonight as our audit has not returned from the local government commission. The governmental accounting standards board has updating, so has updated some of the procedures that they've got to, uh, follow and that has slowed them down. So there's a lot of towns that's in our, uh, in our same boat that's still waiting to get their audit back from the local government commission, but, um, he will report next month and, uh, I can give you a, a brief summary on that.
You do. I believe you have one item that is good news for us.
Um, in general, um, our financials, um, are an excellent report. Um, that's one thing that we're getting. Um, most notably, our, our fund balance, um, grew by two hundred thousand dollars by June thirtieth and at the very beginning of the year, we were projected to possibly have a budget of eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, there was a combination of revenues that unexpectedly came high, uh, with most notably the sales tax, which grew by two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from prior year, and that is a good indicator that our economy is starting to pick up. Um, sales tax is one of those revenue streams that's extremely volatile. Um, but, uh, in addition to that, um, many of our departmental line items were much lower than the budgeted amounts and that, um, um, credit goes solely to our finance director and the rest of our department heads who really, um, did a wonderful job at cutting our expenses, especially in the last two to three months of the fiscal year. So, uh, in short, our financials came back extraordinarily well and, um, I'm just, uh, elated, so.
And fuel costs helped us tremendously. They really dropped and that was a big help to us. All right, at this time, uh, moving along to item number fourteen. This is opening, I'm opening public hearing number one on the Whitley rezoning petition. Uh, Mr. Whitley, would you like to comment on, on your request? Thank you.
I thank you for the opportunity to be able to come for you tonight. Congratulations to the new members on the board, city council. Thank you, Mayor, and to the other two council members seated. I'm here tonight asking for a rezoning request from I-1 to a R-20 on a piece of property I own down here on Batley Dairy Road. It's known as the old Gil Batley property. And, uh, I, right now, with what I've got in mind, I think it's going to be better benefit for our county and for myself if we can change it from I, from I-1 to a R-20. So I would appreciate that request. If you would change it to that, I, I would appreciate that.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Whitley? Okay. Anyone else have any comments regarding this? Okay, if not, we'll close the, uh, rezoning on this and we will consider item number fifteen, which is a rezoning request. The, uh, zoning board has met on this and the zoning board has recommended that we approve it. What are your wishes, counsel?
Make a recommend, a recommendation that we, uh, go along with the zoning board and approve the, make the change from I-1 to R-20.
No, second that motion.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any further comment from counsel? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. We also have under enclosure number four, the adoption of a council statement of consistency for the Whitley property. Uh, what are your wishes on that?
Make a motion, we accept it.
Okay, got a motion to adopt the statement of consistency on the Whitley property. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second at this time? Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, item number seventeen. At this time, we'll open public hearing number two on the King Wells rezoning petition. Uh, do we have a representative here from, that would like to comment on what the properties? Good to have you with us. Name, state your name, please.
Robbie King, um, owner of the property. What we're doing is we just want to get it rezoned back to the R-820, uh, from R-20. We're looking at putting a manufactured home there. Um, residential twenty won't allow that under certain CD standards, so that's what we're wanting to do. And we appreciate you taking this up.
Might I have any questions? Okay, anyone else got comments regarding that property? If not, we will close the public hearing on it, and at this time we'll consider the rezoning request. And the zoning board has recommended that this, that we rezone this property.
I'll make a motion that we rezone this property. At their request.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further comment from counsel? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also, on this property, again, we have the statement of consistency for the King Wells property, and what do you wish to do on that, counsel?
Same, make a motion, we accept that.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second, any further comment, counsel? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Either way, opposed? Alright, those two properties have been rezoned, thank you so much. Item number 20 is public hearing on economic development, and I'm going to ask the city manager to make comments on this. Right.
Resolution for the next item to be passed, once the closure of this public hearing.
Anyone here tonight got any comments on this? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing at this time. We will move along to the updated resolution of support for Global Packaging, which is enclosure number eight. And I will go over this. Whereas Global Packaging has made the decision to expand its operations to their business located at 106 Marks Creek Lane, Richmond County, in Hamlet, North Carolina, whereas expansion will create 32 new jobs. And the company plans to invest a total of 9.9 million over the next three years in Hamlet, North Carolina, and a total of 13.3 million over the next five years. Whereas, the average salary will be $33,634. This is higher than the average annual wage in Richmond County, which is $31,140. Whereas, the city of Hamlet welcomes and encourages industrial development opportunities. Whereas, the city of Hamlet has agreed to promote such development and growth for Global Packaging Incorporated at the reference property location through a combination of incentives. Whereas, those incentives include performance-based infrastructure grants, in accordance with the Hamlet Economic Development Grant Program, to be awarded for a period of time not to exceed five years. Whereas, those incentives may also include debris removal, fee waivers, utility fees reductions, and/or infrastructure installations, which will be in-kind services provided by the city at no cost to Global Packaging Incorporated. Whereas, both parties will agree upon the most beneficial manner to accomplish this goal. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, and the Hamlet City Council congratulate Global Packaging on its expansion and decision to continue investing in the city of Hamlet. Now therefore be it further resolved that the Hamlet City Manager is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with Global Packaging Incorporated pursuant to the City of Hamlet Economic Development Grant Program in accordance with General Statute 158.7.1. The foregoing resolution having been submitted to a vote, received the following vote and was duly adopted on the eighth day of 2015. Counsel, what are your wishes on this resolution?
Make a motion, we accept it.
Got a motion to accept? Got a second?
Second.
Got a second from Councilman Lindsay? Any further comment on it?
I would just like to say that this was a huge benefit for the city. This was something that was worked on by people other than city employees, folks at the county, folks with the state, and whenever we agreed to enter into this agreement with them, it brought jobs to the town, county, it also brought a better tax base for us ultimately down the road. We will really reap the benefits off of this in several years. Very pleased that this was able to occur.
We're certainly glad to have them as corporate partner with us, that's great, and certainly want to do what we can to make things good for them. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all in favor. On enclosure number eight, item 21, excuse me, item 22, is donation of property to Habitat for Humanity at 304 High Street. The city of Hamlet owns various little pieces of property here and there that we've apparently owned for many, many years. Bert might even be more familiar with that than we are, but anyway, we got to looking around to see what we had when Habitat came, looking for properties that could be used to put houses on. And they came and talked to us, and we rode around and looked at some properties, and we've got properties now, just small pieces of property that are sitting there that are big enough to put small houses on, that have not been paying the city anything for the last however many years we've had them. But if we can donate this property, which is authorized under the general statutes, if we can donate this to these people, they will put houses on these property that will pay us taxes, so we haven't lost anything on it. So what we have, what we have right here is, we have their request, which they have requested that we donate this piece of property at the corner of High and Oakland, for an nominal amount of $1, in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 168.279. Says after viewing the property, now this is their letter, says after viewing the property, we see that we can build two houses on this piece of property. Our intention is to build two houses, one facing High Street and one facing Oakland, it's right up near the cemetery. Based on the size of the families will be selected in our program prior to building. We look forward to continuing our work with Richmond County and specifically Hamlet. So this is, this is a real progress for us, and we do have a resolution for this, which is, whereas the city of Hamlet seeks to ensure all of its citizens have access to high-quality affordable housing, and affordable housing has been widely recognized as a public purpose for which municipal funds may be spent. Whereas, when possible, the city of Hamlet seeks to return unused municipal property back to productive use under private ownership. Whereas Habitat for Humanity of the North Carolina Sandhills Incorporated is a nonprofit group which has long been engaged in providing high-quality affordable housing throughout Richmond County and surrounding areas. Whereas, General Statute 168.279 authorizes the city to convey real property by private sale to any nonprofit public or private entity for public purposes, which the city would itself carry out. And whereas, the real property to be conveyed is approximately six tenths of an acre of land, owned by the city and located at 304 High Street in Hamlet. The property, as required by General Statute 168.279, the city did not acquire the property by eminent domain, did not. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hamlet. The city, section one, the Hamlet City Manager is hereby authorized to execute a contract that will convey fee simple title to the property to Habitat for Humanity of the Sandhills Incorporated. The Hamlet City Manager is hereby authorized to accept an offer of $1 for the property from Habitat for Humanity of the Sandhills. The contract shall contain such conditions as terms, as will help ensure that the property is used only for affordable housing purposes. The sale of the property shall comply with the requirements of General Statute 168.279 and 168.267, including but not limited to the sale, shall not be consummated until 10 days after the publication of notice required by General Statute 168.267. This resolution shall become effective upon adoption. Gentlemen, what are your wishes, and ladies?
Based on the recommendation of the city manager, Mayor, and staff, who's looked into this, I'll make a motion that we accept this and donate this property to Habitat for Humanity.
Got a motion?
Second.
Have a second, further comments?
Just would add that this is a win-win for the city and the county, folks is going to be in the home. It helps us get rid of property that we own that we have no use for. It helps us make sure these pieces of property are upkept, additions added to them. And it also betters the community, because now you're, you're building new homes, and in some of these areas where we own the property, it's not the greatest looking part of town. So hopefully this will revitalize some of these areas, and hopefully this may be a long-term partnership that could really benefit Habitat for Humanity and the city of Hamlet.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number three is budget amendments. We're here at the halfway point through the fiscal year with second quarter budget amendments. We just need to make a motion to approve these. Budget amendments? Did you want to make a comment on it before we?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, the budget amendments before you for the second quarter have a few changes that were not initially budgeted for. Some examples would be some grant revenue that we received, as well as revenue from contributions from other agencies. We have collected $21,975 in contributions from other agencies and grants. And another $8,700 roughly is used out of sales taxes to increase our budget by $30,700. And we're using this money to satisfy the purchase of the animal control truck and purchase some animal control supplies, purchase bulletproof vests. We're increasing our budget for police training. We also got a sizable grant for a fire pump that we received a little over a month ago. And we're also satisfying an action that we did earlier this year to hire some part-time staff for the Parks and Rec Department. We're taking the salaries and the benefits out of full-time and putting that into part-time. That's worked out really well for us, and I'm really excited that things are looking so good.
And I would comment, one of the things that, I don't know how many people noted it, but one of the grants that we got was a contribution from the Sandhill Regional Hospital Ladies Auxiliary. And they donated $3,000 toward the protective vest, and that was, that was great, that was wonderful. I need a motion, or did I get a motion on that?
Not yet.
Okay.
But I so moved that we accept the budget amendments.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, any further comments, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Counsel, on item number 24, which is enclosure number 11, is our tax releases. And if you look at you, we have some of those for the new council, every month we have them, and they're for various things. And you can see what the issues are there, and once you see where they have situs there, what happens, they got charged taxes on vehicles that were not actually inside the city limit of Hamlet, they lived outside the city limit of Hamlet. So I would ask for an approval on tax releases.
Make a motion that we accept those tax releases.
Have a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've got an item here, item of business, it's kind of a two-faced item of business. Every year, the, or excuse me, all the time, there is a city council representative on the ABC board. And over the past two years, Councilman Eddie has been the representative. But we also have our new councilwoman who is a regular serving member, and she will have to come off of that as a regular serving member. And at this time, I would ask that the board make a recommendation as to who from the council will be the representative on the ABC board.
Well, as you stated, I am presently the representative of the council on the ABC board. However, when I was appointed about a year and a half ago to the board, Ms. Masagie was already on the board and had been on the board for maybe a year and a half, two years or so. And now that she's elected to the city board, two councilmembers can't serve on the same board, obviously. And so, inasmuch as I feel like that she's really an asset to the ABC board with her skills and financial decisions, and her computer skills are much better than mine, I just think that the council and the ABC board would be better served if I withdraw my position as the council representative on the ABC board and yield to Ms. Masagie, who is now on the board. And so therefore, I would, I would ask the council at this time to allow me to withdraw, and I'll make a nomination that Councilman Person Wendy Masagie, I'll make the nomination that she be appointed as the council representative to the ABC board.
I second that.
Got a second, any further comments or nominations? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I just assumed. Now that we have, now that we have a vacancy on the ABC board, and real quick, before we get started on that, I just never want to miss opportunity to commend the ABC board that we've got right now. They are just doing a terrific job over there. They've, they've made a lot of improvements and turned a lot of money back to the city, and they just, they really work hard over there. We just, you don't ever hear about them because they're doing such a good job. But at this time, we need to make an appointment to the ABC board. I only have the one application, am I correct on that? And it's from Shannon Bowers, Pondham Drive in Hamlet. And I would just ask for your comments, counsel, or motion.
Is she still willing? Is she, is she willing, sir? Okay. Make a motion, we accept that application and appoint Ms. Bowers.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, any further comment, or further nominations? Okay, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll move along into other business, and we'll do departmental report. Acting Chief, what do you got for us tonight, anything? We don't have, we're short of microphones tonight, Chief, I'm sorry.
You're lucky, Dave, Chief.
Thank you.
As we speak, our GI truck is being worked on, and it should be completed within just a few days. That pump that the manager was talking about is going on that truck, so we should have a very formidable piece of equipment once it's completed, and something that should last the city a many a year, so we're proud of it.
Chief, can you elaborate on the source of that grant funding?
The grant itself was, it was delivered to us kind of through a collaboration with us and Trinity Manufacturing, actually, that's the way it started, that's the way part of it started. And it's actually a grant that's something we can apply for on a yearly basis, and actually, it will help the fire department a great deal in the future, so.
Part of the funds came from Trinity, and the other was matched by the rescue squad, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to uplift that, I thought that that was a great offering.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, we appreciate what you're doing over there. Let's see, Mr. Garner, have you got anything for us tonight? See, that was easy, he just shook his head.
They don't want to get up there in front of the microphone.
Mr. Green, did you have anything else for us tonight? Okay, we're glad to have you. Am I missing anybody, I don't see any others. We have a number of our employees that are sick, and that's very unfortunate. Madam Clerk, do you have anything else for us tonight, or who have I got? Oh, I've got Gail Hayden back there, come on up to the front, Ms. Strickland.
Thank you.
I apologize.
That's okay, I'm just so excited to announce this. I finally have a bid packet available for the demolition of a house on Spring Street, so I am announcing that to the public. Any of our demolition contractors that would like to get a bid packet, they are available here at City Hall, or they are available online. Please get them, complete them, and get them back into us by December 21st. Once the bid is awarded, we will then get our permit from the state and begin the demolition of that to clear off that house. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. We have very little money, but Ms. Strickland is constantly working on these various houses and constantly working on these owners to try to get them to bring these properties into compliance. Some of them are just beyond help, and we do appreciate all. all the hand wringing and hair pulling that you do to try to get this taken care of. And thank you so much. Madam Clerk, anything?
Would just like to take a moment to thank council for the reappointment of the city clerk's position. And if I can, also thank Joy Horton and her sister as well for helping out with the reception that's planned for afterwards tonight. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Morpheus, did you have any comment?
I just want to thank you all for reappointing my firm and me. It's our pleasure to serve the City of Hamlet. And for once, I do not have a closed session. I know you all are very excited about that.
I know. I was, I was very vocal about that. I said, I have to say that this is the first, in my two years as mayor, this is the first time I haven't had a closed session. And praise the Lord. I was glad to do that. But we do appreciate what you have done for us in the last two years. There's so much stuff behind the scenes that people don't realize that have been done, such as our updates on our ordinances and updates on policies. And that's a tremendous amount of work. But Mr. Morpheus has been working with the city manager and the city clerk. And we definitely appreciate the work. It's been very good, very professional. So thank you on that. Mr. Abernathy, it's your turn.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to thank Assistant Chief White for stepping up and serving in the interim as our interim fire chief. I promoted him early, early last week after the retirement of Chief Knight. And in regards to our employees that are sick, we do have a number of employees sick and it's going, it's going around. Our police chief, Scott Waters is sick, as well as our public works director, Billy Stubbs. And our finance director, Ms. Dickens, is actually attending a play for her daughter. But just keep those folks in mind. I don't, I don't think that I have much more to announce other than the parade is Thursday at 3:30. And the visitor center and the Amtrak station will be open to the public and the restrooms will be available for use. Old Fashioned Christmas, as Ms. Bernice said, will be this Friday and Saturday. City offices will be closed Thursday and Friday, December 24th and 25th for the Christmas holiday. And we've adjusted our garbage schedule. All garbage for the 24th and the 25th, which is Thursday and Friday, will be collected on Wednesday, December 23rd. We're also closed on Friday, January 1st for New Year's. And Friday's garbage on New Year's Day will be collected on Thursday, December 31st. I certainly hope that everyone has a happy holiday season and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you so much. Congrats to our, our new council members. I look forward to working with you. And I'm, I'm really excited for the future.
Does anyone have anything, questions for the manager or anything? Comment? Okay. Thank you, sir. Moving along, we'll go to comments of council at this time. And I will call on Councilman Martin.
Well, I just would like to say Pat and Tony have left the room. But I do appreciate and congratulate them on their service to the city. Also, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Mr. Lindsay and Ms. Masagie to the board. I'm looking forward to serving with both of you. I think we'll, we'll have, we'll do some good things for the City of Hamlet. Other than that, it's Christmas time. Merry Christmas to everybody. And hope you have a prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Mr. Lindsay?
Thank you. I want to thank the citizens for putting me up here and their support. And I want to thank my wife mainly for her support through everything. Put a little pressure on Zach back there. We're gonna have the parade on Thursday and we're gonna videotape. G104 is gonna do a live broadcast. And if it all goes well, they'll put it together and Zach's gonna have it on YouTube. So the hard work of my wife and Ron Mayo, they'll be able to watch it. And the people who are in the parade will be able to watch it. So hopefully it'll all work out. We're pretty confident. But I put the pressure on Zach. He didn't want to talk about it. But, but it's gonna work out. It's gonna be good. And again, be uploaded on YouTube at some later point. Shouldn't be too long down the road. But again, I want to thank my wife again and look forward to working with all the new employee, or the employees. And we did lose a lot of experience that left here. And a lot to learn. And I'm sure, as Pat said, I'll be looking my head up against the wall. But I have had some government experience. So I know that it's there. But again, Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Masagie?
I would like to thank everyone for their support and encouragement. I would thank my children, but they left right after their part was done. So I'm not gonna thank them. I look forward to working with all of you. I know we have, they have big shoes to fill. And hopefully we can do a great job for all of the citizens of Hamlet.
Thank you. Mr. McQueen?
Yeah, just a few things. We've heard a little bit tonight about things happening in the past. And I for one, am looking forward to the future. Hitting the ground running with Wendy and Dave, the other ones up here. I think this is a turning point for Hamlet. We've never wavered in doing the work of the town. But at times, it did get a little, as Pat said, a little loud. And I'm looking forward to smooth transitions that I know we'll have. We lost some experience, but we also gained some experience. It's not all about politics. It's all about what you got up here and what you got here. And I know we got that with the two new elected officials. We were missed. I didn't also mention Jonathan on his reelection. He's not able to be here tonight. He did everything he could do to try to be able to make this meeting happen to where he could be here. And this is one of the only meetings I've ever known him to have to miss. And it's sad that he had to miss it on his reappointment to take care of that for the next meeting. I also want to thank Chief Martin for the time that you graciously served on the ABC board. You did, you did a great job there as well. And I hope I helped you with those computer skills a little bit. I wanted to welcome Mr. Green. I don't know you, but I've heard good things about him. And you look familiar. So that's a good thing. I know, I know our paths are crossed at some point before. Please, and it's one of the clerks, Morpheus, you're doing a great job. I can't say enough personally about the work that that man right there is doing. Mr. Morpheus, I'm proud of him. When we came on two years ago, we took, we took some hits for going a different direction. And spending a little more money. I'm, I'm proud to say that that was well worth it. Thank you for your hard work. Other than that, I'd like to congratulate Calvin and appoint him as the general fire chief. I'd like to thank all the employees of the town for all their hard work that they've done. Not just this year, but, but over the years, just hitting some hard times. Depending on what side of the pitch you were on, if you were looking at it through, through one lens, you might think that we were doing great five, six, 18 years ago. And looking at it from a different perspective, you'd say we're doing better now. I look forward to the, can't stress that enough. To me, my time as being a Hamlet every employee and on this board for six years now, I've never been happier than I am right now under that kind of pressure. So with that, I would just say Merry Christmas to all the employees and citizens. Thank you for all the hard work that everybody's done. Especially for the folks that had to came to me. Some did leave children special. But it's a special type of person that would come out and take part in local government. And I do appreciate everyone coming out. Other than that, that's all I have.
Well, first off, we've got a lot of time to kill. It's not 10 o'clock yet. We don't usually get out of here before 10 o'clock. I generally have to write stuff down, my thoughts and stuff, to be sure I get them right. So I got a few notes that I need to read out. No, I'm sorry, not that. Two years ago, I became your mayor. The time was extremely turbulent. The election was hard fought. There were many accusations and innuendos that were put forth. The first year was turbulent, to say the least. There were a number of things either left over or begging to be changed. There were several different factions in the community with their own ideas of things that needed to be done in Hamlet. We the council fought these battles and through the work of the council and city staff, we surmounted those conflicts. Some of the issues that we had to complete were a new police chief, a new city manager, a new senior center director, a new recreation director, and a new downtown coordinator slash museum director. Very few cities or mayors have to face this many changes in one year. Additionally, we had to try to bring the budget into line. The second year has been a much better year for the council and the mayor. We resolved many issues. We have filled the open supervisor positions with great people, with our latest being Mr. Gary Green as our downtown coordinator slash museum director. We will soon be appointing a new fire chief as our longtime fire chief, David Knight, is retiring as of 31st of December. During the past two years, I have tried to represent the city at as many official functions as possible. I believe in the City of Hamlet and that we are on the way up. I have met with county and state officials. I've met with Lumber River Council of Government and industry officials to put forward our needs. One of the things that's very dear to my heart is trying to obtain funding for the Opera House and for the demolition of additional derelict properties. I have enjoyed working with the Hamlet Downtown Business Development Association. The association is very active in our city, trying to promote additional business. Currently, they have taken over the Christmas parade, which is this Thursday, Thursday afternoon at 3:30 PM. Our Christmas on Hamlet Avenue is at 5:30 PM on December the 11th. Our Christmas on Main Street is 5:30 PM on December the 12th. And we hope that everyone will come out and visit. It's always a lot of fun. The Friends of Hamlet have decorated the library grounds and will be delivering gifts to homeless children at Christmas time. Backpack Pals is operating in Hamlet by Reverend Steve Cruz and the Church of God of Prophecy. And in addition to these, we have the National Railroad Museum. We have the Seaboard Festival Committee, the Hamlet Tree Group, Friends of Hamlet Library, all of these operated by our dedicated citizens. And these are just a few of the things that our citizens are doing that we, that make me proud to represent you. As previously explained at the beginning of the last fiscal year, 2014, 2015, we were required to place in our budget a certain amount of money from our fund balance in case it was needed. Not only did we not use any of that appropriation, but we actually added about $200,000 into the fund balance as of the 30th of June. We are all very proud of that. The, again, this again is due to the great work of both the Hamlet city staff and the council. I will truly miss both Councilman Clue, who I have worked with for six years, and Councilman Presley, who I worked with for 10 years. Both have been passionate about the city. Our previous council has worked well together and I'm looking forward to working with the new council and city staff to make Hamlet the best it can be. Thank you for allowing me once again to represent you for the next two years. Please don't forget to thank our employees when you see them out on the street during the season. Thank them, wish them Merry Christmas. A very Merry Christmas to all of you from myself and my wife, who is my greatest supporter and who makes it possible for me to be up here and where I'm supposed to be at a particular time. I'm excited about our two new council people. We're glad to have you. Look forward to working with you. And thank you so much. At this time, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to close.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor say aye.